The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Beistel.
Here.
Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Mr. Ben.
Here. Let the record show that Mrs. Shipley notified me that she'd be out of town and wouldn't be able to make it this evening, so we have eight present. Citizens comments?
Kathryn Feike. Since we're starting a new year, I just wanted to start a little trend of getting the rules out so that people that don't come on a regular basis or watch on TV understand what's going on. So the rules for citizens comments as per the current board policy 006 and 903, be advised that citizens comments is your opportunity to present your information to the board in regard to our agenda items and our Southmoreland schools. It is not expected to be a dialogue between you and the board. Do not expect any remarks or responses to any comments that you make today. It is our intention to take these comments seriously and resolve such matters as deemed necessary. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. Also note that we will not permit any statements that exceed five minutes. You will be notified when you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. We also cannot permit any statements that are personally directed or obscene, abusive, or irrelevant as decided by the presiding officer. All speakers must preface their commands, I'm sorry, comments by an announcement of their name, address, and any group affiliation if it's appropriate. This is to ensure that only Southmoreland citizens or those deemed as such are speaking to the board. Thank you for your interest in Southmoreland schools. Kathryn Feike.
I have come here tonight to speak on behalf of majority of the taxpayers in the Southmoreland School District. Certainly, I am not speaking for the two men who came here in previous meetings who requested a tax increase. But the rest of us are dancing in the streets regarding Dr. Monar's report at the last board meeting. The Southmoreland School District is rolling in cash. It is just shy of $7 million in the bank. We thank you, knowing that there will be no tax increases in the Southmoreland School District for at least approximately three to five years. And considering that the new governor will probably be handing you a blank check, it is so comforting for us to know that we have no financial problems to deal with. But I'm also here to speak about solving an embarrassing rating that is held by the Southmoreland School District. The public rating of D minus for a lack of transparency and a lack of information on the district website has been made public. Today, published in the Tribune Review Live, is the solution to that problem. It comes from a school district that's only about 25 or 30 miles away, the Baldwin Whitehill School District. The headline says that this school district will post information online. Salaries for Baldwin Whitehall School District employees will go online for public inspection, as will all contracts, bills, and other documents approved by the school board. The postings will begin next month in an effort to bolster openness. "It's called transparency," says board member Martin Schmotscher. "There's no reason to play cat and mouse games with different organizations when we've already voted on stuff. It's over. Put it on the website and be done with it." The board voted unanimously to post documents on its website. Schmotscher said, "I think we're throwing away a lot of money playing hide-and-seek. The bottom line is that everybody here is a public employee, and there should not be any secrets." Documents that the public will be able to see include contracts, check registries, and bills. The district will not make public information about students or any matters not covered by the open records law. The concern about contract negotiations was addressed, and the response has been that everyone will then be on the same page. There will be no accusations about backdoor meetings, or under-the-table agreements, or any accusations made against any negotiators or anyone on either side. Everybody will be informed. There will be open information and discussion about these issues, and it will in fact improve the climate for all negotiations. The Office of Open Records has found in favor of this district and their attempt to increase transparency. I think it is a role model that should be accepted by this district so that our, your constituents, our citizens, our taxpayers will be informed and educated about what is happening in the school district. I request that you put such information on the website. If you choose not to do that, please inform me, and I will file the appropriate right-to-information forms. But I'm sure that you will take this seriously and vote to increase the transparency in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes?
At the next week's meeting, you'll be asked to approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2014 reorganization meeting.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Finance?
You'll also be asked to approve the November 2014 treasures report. And at this time, I would like Mr. Marnell to talk a little bit about the Act One opt-out resolution that we will also ask you to approve next week.
I think in your board packet you have copy of the resolution according to the Act One law.
That would be the pile that's on your desk, not in your pack.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. You can sort of change the word. I used to pass those things. This is your resolution to notify the public and Department of Education that any potential tax increase would be limited to your Act One index, which this year is 2.7 percent. And this has to be approved on or before January 29th.
So just to be clear about this, by doing this, we are opting out of the requirement to prepare preliminary budgets. And the reason we would need to do that is if we were planning to recommend a tax increase that was greater than the 2.7 percent. So with this particular resolution, the tax increase would be 2.7 percent or anything below that, which could also include no increase. We're not that far along in the process yet to make that recommendation.
Questions for Mr. Marnell on that? Hearing none. Discussion athletics?
I've asked Mr. Swink to take the podium and just talk a little bit about some of our current athletic programs and some of the progress that's being made there.
I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit tonight on some of our programs and the way they're heading. Starting the new year, just in our boys' basketball, they are currently 10-2 in the season. They had an excellent start. They had 10 wins in a row. They played Indiana last night, which they lost, but that team's ranked third in the state. They held their own, and they're very strong. They placed first in the Brownsville Tournament this year, bringing home a trophy there. They play second at the Chalroy Federal over the Christmas Tournament. We also have our first year of freshman basketball underway. It's going pretty well. Hopefully, we can keep that continuing in the future because, again, we're starting to see some of the results in our basketball program with the middle school, the freshman team. These kids are getting a lot of time, and plus the elementary programs that we got going as well. You'll see some dividends. The girls' basketball team right now is 5-5 on the season. They play second at the Southmoreland Tip-Off Tournament, and they also won the Guyville Tournament over Christmas, so they won first place there. Again, very nice showing. We haven't done that in quite a while. Now, the girls are playing well. Hopefully, again, we're going to start seeing with some of these programs in the, you know, the elementary schools and our middle schools. If we can keep them growing, it's only going to reflect better in our high school. And if you watch the girls play now, they're 100 times better. I mean, they're scoring a lot of points, they're playing together as a team, and they look pretty good. And they are at Terry tonight, so hopefully they'll bring home a win there. Boys wrestling, they're 6-1 overall in dual match competition. They actually beat Penn Trafford, if you guys know, it's AAA school. They were ranked 12th in the WPIO at the time, a very big win for them. They're 4-1 in the section. They have one more section match left with Elizabeth Ford, but no matter what happens with that match, which we should win very easily, they are in the team championships and will be in the playoffs starting probably in about two weeks. So they have a real good chance of making a statement there. The team is wrestling very well. They had placed third in Normandy, Ohio at the beginning of the year in a tournament with 29 teams out there. It's like a dual match tournament, and they come in third place, which is excellent. Our Southmoreland Christmas Tournament, they came in second place there, which is the highest finish a Southmoreland team has had at that tournament. We had two champions, Tyler Griffith at 106. He was also named outstanding wrestler of the event, which is a pretty big honor to be seen by the peers and his other wrestling coaches there. He was picked as one of the finest wrestlers on the map. Jake Beistel, this was his second championship in his many years, so he, again, took it pretty convincingly. Evan Myers and Anthony Wise, they both finished third, had a nice showing. Cole Lambie was sixth, and Colton's on the finish eight, so we had a very nice showing in that tournament. We also hosted the 50th anniversary of our wrestling team. Really, the founder, Joe Grimm, had an event that we honored him and presented him with the plaque. Had a lot of help from the administration and people in the community, and some of you guys had the opportunity to attend. It went off very well. The cafeteria staff, Ms. Huggins, they had an excellent reception for the people in attendance. A lot of alumni, old coaches came back. They had a pretty nice time reminiscing, talking about the past. We introduced all of them at the beginning of the match. Coach Shaw had his kids come over and, you know, individually shook hands with Joe Grimm, thanking him for the dedication or starting the program, and it went off very well. And then evening ended up with us beating Yawk for that crosstown cup, they call it, 42-27. So it turned out to be a very nice event. So right now, things are looking pretty positive. We're going into the second half of the season. I don't see any reason why our boys can't finish really strong. They're playing very well in basketball. I expect them to make the playoffs. Girls, you never know, they're coming around too. So a pretty good season so far, and hopefully this will lead us into spring with baseball, softball, and track in the same direction. So any questions? Just want to keep you guys informed. I appreciate the few minutes I have to talk to you, and thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
There's a JV in the boys', there's a JV and a freshman team. Is that right, or no?
Yeah, we have a JV and a freshman team. The freshman team plays their own schedule. They usually play, they play 3:30 each day or when their games are at the high school. The JV are the other kids, usually sophomores and juniors, that'll play before the varsity game. And we did beat Mount Pleasant, in case you guys know that. The boys beat Mount Pleasant almost by 3:00. I said that was a good deal. Anytime we can beat them. Which the wrestling team actually lost by a default point. We tied Mount Pleasant with the match, and there was one point our wrestler had a headgear, and it came off while he was wrestling, and he just kind of tossed it off. Unfortunately, he was hit for a point because they say that could have hit a spectator, and the way the default fell, that cost us the match. But, you know, it looks like, talking to Ryan, if we get into the championship, there's a good chance we might get another shot at him, so hopefully they can take it to him.
I just wanted to mention that there was a nice article in the Independent Observer on the front page with Coach Adams and his fathering or mentoring skills that he has brought to the district. And so if anybody gets a chance to read it, please do. It was a very good article.
Yeah.
It does make you very proud.
One thing too, I don't know if you have watched the Armstrong Channel, Coach Shaw's done a very good job. Almost every one of our home matches have been televised on there, so if you couldn't get out, you know, it's been televised, and you could actually watch it. It's nice because we get some copies. The kids like seeing themselves on TV too. So, all righty. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Old business, seeing none. New business, Presley Ridge Agreement?
Right. Next week, we will ask you to renew the current letter of agreement with Presley Ridge. This is not a monetary agreement or a contract, but rather more or less an articulation agreement that talks about the rules that we follow and the rules that Presley Ridge follows when we have students there. So we would ask you to approve that for us, please.
Any questions? Seeing none. Direct energy?
And the next two items, I'll ask again Mr. Marnell to discuss. Direct energy, which is our natural gas supplier, and then Keytech's Energy Curtailment Services Agreement. So Jim?
Yes. We participate in the Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Purchasing Consortium, and we have been participating in that group for many years. It's coordinated by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, and with gas prices at historic lows, they went out for bids late summer, early fall with several suppliers, and Direct Energy was the best bidder. And our recommendation as a group is to approve this two-year agreement with Direct Energy. The estimated savings to us over the next two years, the agreement starts September 1st of 2015, so we're in our last year of the current agreement. Runs for two years until August 31st of 2017. Estimated savings, little over $7,500. Every little bit helps. Keytech's Energy is our broker for electricity, and we participate in a program with them on what's called the Energy Curtailment. And by participating in this program, once a year, we participate in a shutdown of our electrical systems in case there would be an emergency. Usually what happened in, if it ever happened, it would be either in the hottest part of the summer when there's a great demand on electricity. Participants in the program then would be notified to power down to help the electrical grid. We've never actually been asked to power down our system, but for participating in the test, we receive a refund from the electricity grid. And for our participation this past summer, we received a refund check over the holidays of $1,671. So again, it's not a big payback, but it's certainly worth the time that Mr. Ms. Wall and Roy put in, standing by in late afternoons and turning down our two systems, right? This complex and the high school complex, are the two biggest electrical users. And again, I recommend that we continue to participate in this program with Keytech's Energy.
Any questions on that? Seeing none. 006 meetings?
Yeah, we have a number of policy revisions this evening, and one is Policy 006, which talks about the design of our meetings. And we drafted a policy that we would like you to consider and post. And what that entails is it designs separate agendas for the pre-agenda or the planning meetings and the voting meetings. Citizen comments at the beginning of the planning session would deal with any school-related item. Citizen comments at the end of the planning meeting would be limited to agenda items that have been discussed by the board. At the voting meetings then, citizen comments would deal with agenda items that would be on that meeting's agenda, and there would not be citizen comments at the end of the voting meeting. Comment cards would be required 10 minutes before the beginning of the meeting for those comments made at the beginning of the meeting, and for those comments at the end of the meeting, a card would be completed and given to the secretary prior to the individual being recognized by the chair. Time limits have been set at five minutes per speaker, 15 minutes per agenda item. Then the other thing we did is we restructured, or proposed a restructuring of the voting meetings a little bit, to place committee reports before voting, because sometimes committee reports inform agenda items. And that would include the CWCTC reports, any standing committees, the IU report, my report, and the student reports. Would be nice to have the student reports earlier in the meeting. Sometimes by the time the students have a chance to speak, they're really wishing they were home and in bed or home studying for a test, and anyone who might have been attending the meeting has not made it through our executive session, has gone home, and sometimes the people who really would like to be hearing what the students have to say don't have that opportunity. So we thought we would put those items before the voting items and then go ahead with the old and the new business. Policy 903 governs public participation in board meetings, and it mirrors mostly the things that I already covered. And Peggy, if you would pass that around, I apologize, I forgot to put that in your packets, but it's basically the things I just talked about. We're also considering a couple of minor tweaks to the comment cards, so we can discuss 903 next week as the board considers the posting of the policies. So questions or comments or discussion on that particular item?
Hi, Vice President, Dr. Monar. I handed down a memo. I had read the policies and had comments on two of them, on the 006. Everything that Dr. Monar so far has orally announced, I don't have any comment to. On the section in my written comments, it would suggest a change that you make a decision by putting into your policy where you want guest speakers to appear, so that you're not constantly having to take motions to suspend the rules and insert that into your I guess the other comment would be, by practice, the solicitor's report is at the end of the meeting, and I would assume that you would want to continue that. On a more substantive nature, under Section 7 hearings of citizens, I would recommend that you put into the policy what is in the statute so that it's easier to everybody to understand, and that would be to insert in the first line after the phrase, "A member of the public," and before the words, "present at the meeting," who is either a resident of this school district or a taxpayer of this school district. That's what is needed to qualify to be having a right for the citizen to stand on that they can address the school board. A more tricky area was in the third full paragraph, when there are multiple speakers on the same issue, presents two different problems. One is, it may be possible for multiple speakers on the same issue, but with very different points of view, and perhaps even opposing points of view. And so in that instance, I think it would be impossible to expect them to agree upon a spokesperson. But even in the instance in which you have a group under the open meeting law, there's still a problem. The board could request the group to designate two or three. And the way it's worded, it's not clear whether the president would be, you know, making a request or requiring them to limit themselves to two or three. Actually, in the open meeting law, if everybody in the group qualifies, theoretically, they could all speak. On the public input of the agenda on the speaker's card, insofar as identifying their name and address and topic, okay, but to indicate whether they want to speak for or against the issue, I see as a problem.
Yeah, you know what? We discussed that, and that's coming out.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that solves that one. And then on the non-agenda items, you may run into the same problem, that if you're going to have people talking on non-agenda items, trying to limit that entire group to 15 minutes could be a problem because there could be instances in which people want to speak and would never get to speak because there, other people would use up the time. I'd like to kind of look into that a little bit further to see if there's any other comment or way that could be handling that, so.
Maybe sometime between now and next week, we can sit down and do that.
Would be good.
That would be good. Thank you.
Any board comments? Questions?
Just to be open, Dr. Monar, myself, and the Vice President Cheryl Shipley are the ones that sat down and looked at these changes, and we looked at many different policies from many different districts and some from the PSBA website that had sample policies. So if you have any input between now and next week, let Dr. Monar and myself know, and we can bring it on the agenda for the discussion to post this if Attorney Platonic gets everything to his end done. So nothing else from anyone else?
Thank you. Policy revisions, 004.
Policy 004 has to do with membership on the board, and the changes from the current policy include the fact that the superintendent shall have a seat on the board and the right to speak on all matters, but not the right to vote. Again, I took these from the PSBA boilerplates. It also provided more specific information on when ethics forms must be filed. Section 4 regarding vacancies language was also added so that it ensured compliance with both the school code and the Sunshine Act, and a section was added to address temporary vacancies that occur due to a board member being on active military service. The section was also added that addresses in-service education for board members, and the section dealing with conferences was made more specific, especially in terms of reimbursement. And a provision was added to authorize student representation to the board.
Again, I had three little comments. I'm not going to comment any further.
Anyone else question or comments on that policy? 302.
What we will do, by the way, before we ask you to post these, we will take care of the solicitor's legal concerns, and then we'll send some of the corrected policies out of next week's packet for you. 302, employment of superintendent. The title was changed to include assistant superintendent. When this policy was written, we didn't have an assistant superintendent at the time. We had an administrative assistant to the superintendent who functioned as an assistant superintendent, but instead of having his own contract as part of the Act 93 agreement, so now we have an assistant superintendent. So we did change that title. And we also added, language was added to the first page to provide more specificity and to bring it into congruence with current law. The section on pre-employment requirements was changed to add a section on employment history to bring the policy into congruence with current statute, and the sections on employment, contract, and severance were also added to the policy to make it meet requirements of recent legislation.
Any questions on that? Hearing none?
All right, here's where it gets a little bit confusing. Employment of district staff. If you look in our current policy manual, there's one section entitled Section 300, and that addresses administrative employees. One section that is Section 400, and that addresses professional employees, and another section, Section 500, that addresses classified employees. Now, the new PSBA manual boilerplate combined all of those sections into one section, that would be Section 300, and it's just entitled Employees. And it streamlines everything and eliminates a lot of redundancy, because if you look at our policy manual, sometimes the only thing that is changed is the number at the top of the page and the name of the policy, but all the verbiage is the same. So they've streamlined their boilerplate. And some of the language in revised policy 304 reflects that that kind of a merger. Also, language is added to bring the policy into compliance with various pieces of legislation, and those sections include the pre-employment requirements, requirements that take care of people who are paid through Title I funding, requirements that are now in place for special education impaired professionals, personal care assistants, and educational interpreters who work with hearing impaired students. That language dealing with pre-employment requirements was also added to the next set of policies, 305, 306, and 307. And that would include 407 and 507 in our current policy manual as well.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Down to 317?
Actually, yeah. 309 is the next one. 309 is assignment and. 309 is assignment and transfer. This encompasses 409 and 509 as well. And we added language there to address current legislation regarding the frequency of background checks and assurances the comparability requirements are met with respect to the assignment of faculty to historically underserved populations. And what that means, it really doesn't apply a whole lot to our district because we only have one grade span per building, but it's still required to be in your policy. For example, when we had Roughsdale Elementary and Alberton and Scottdale Elementary and we had K to 4 in each of those buildings, if we had a high population of minority students or a high population of economically disadvantaged students in one of those buildings, we have to make sure that those students are taught by staff that is equally or more highly qualified than those who are non-minority or non-economically disadvantaged. And some districts have gotten into trouble because they send their brand-new teachers or their teachers who are less skilled to some of their more lower socioeconomic schools. So again, that's not a problem here, but on an annual basis, Dr. Scott does a comparability report and on an annual basis, we assure the state that everything here is up to speed. So that's 309.
Questions on that?
Assignment and transfer.
317?
And this policy also combines 317, 417, and 517. The new draft enumerates certain specific behaviors that are prohibited and provides for the use of progressive discipline, which our previous policy did not. It also adds a section that requires employees to self-report within 72 hours if he or she has been listed as a perpetrator in the statewide database in accordance with the Child Protective Services Law. There's a possibility that we might be addressing this policy again in the near future because recently requirements went into place that anyone employed in a school has to have new background checks on a triennial basis. So we may have to readdress that as that legislation materializes and we begin to put that into practice.
818?
317.1 is next. And that's the educator misconduct policy. That policy didn't exist in our manual previously, but the Educator Discipline Act dictates the items that are contained in that policy. And that mostly deals with sexual misconduct on the part of the adults that are employed in our school district and certainly hopefully we never have occasion to use that here.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, 818?
818 deals with contracted service providers and that provides additional provisions with respect to doing an employment history review for those entities providing contracted services to the district. Our physical and occupational therapy services are contracted right now. We occasionally have contractors in and out of the buildings that do some things for us. So anything that's contracted, we have to do an employment history that makes sure that we're compliant with what they've nicknamed the Pass the Trash Law. So if you've been fired or were asked to leave another position because of a certain kind of misconduct, you would be ineligible to be working here. So that's what was added to Policy 818. And as I was working on these, and I'm not going to ask you to make a decision on this tonight, this is just food for thought, or even next week, I don't want you to vote on it and just want to think about it and maybe talk about it for a little bit for the next month or so. But as I was working on these policy revisions, I was reminded that a lot of our policies are pretty old and pretty obsolete. Some of them date back to the last time a major overhaul was done of our policy manual, which was 1983. We don't follow the streamlined format that I just told you about where those three sections are combined. And what I would like the board to consider is a complete review of our policy manual as to make sure that everything in there is up to speed. And that's a pretty big undertaking from beginning to end. We can do this in one of two ways. We can work on it as an in-house project, just like we did these, work with the solicitor and, you know, present a certain number of updated policies every month using boilerplates that we can find. The other option is that we could use a service that PSBA offers. They're able to tailor our policy manual to comply with all legal requirements and then they would dovetail it to suit the needs of our own district. Their fee for that is $5,700. And you would, no matter how we do it, you would still be asked to post and approve the policies, either recommended, you know, by their team or by our in-house team. The other thing that PSBA does offer is they offer an administrative regulation manual and it contains all the forms and all the procedures that accompany the policy manual and that would be at a cost of an additional $4,500. We don't have an administrative regulation manual and to the best of my knowledge, have not ever had one. I've not even been able to find an old one for as long as I've been here. So we would like to get an administrative regulation manual into place, either in-house or, you know, have someone do it for us professionally. And speaking with Mr. Marnell, we do have funds available that are already budgeted in the Board Services category and the Office of the Superintendent category that probably will not be spent this year and could be allocated to this kind of a project. But again, I'm not asking that to be on the agenda for next week. It's kind of a big undertaking and something that needs a little bit of dialogue and thoughts. Again, we're willing to do it on an in-house basis and there's also a professional organization that can do it for us.
Questions or comments on that before we move on? Okay, go ahead.
As far as the pluses and minuses, it would seem to me to hire the PSBA to help us and to do it, they would bring certainly expertise in that. But on the other, I suppose the value, and I just wanted to comment on this, the value of doing it in-house is that you also then are very conversant in the staff with the policies.
Right.
And in some ways, the board is also so, yeah, I'm just sort of, what's the trade-off there of an in-house or...
You've articulated it pretty well. You know, in-house is obviously going to take an investment of time and effort, which we're quite willing to do. In terms of Mr. Platonic's time, I would imagine that something that we do in-house is going to have to be reviewed much more thoroughly than something that's already in a past legal muster once and then we would possibly get a more cursory review in terms of his time. I think that would be one of the trade-offs there, so.
I would think given the length of time since it's been updated, the man-hours for you and administration and the board to actually revise and go through every one of these policies would be substantial.
Yes.
So for $5,700, we only have to do a cursory review of what they produce for us and Mr. Platonic reviews it, so.
My understanding is they actually send a team in and, you know, work hand-in-hand with us as well in terms of the administration, maybe a committee of the board. You know, I don't know all their details yet. Some of the things are outlined in here. If that's of interest, we can certainly, you know, ask some more questions.
They're certainly, they're just going to start with an outline. They're going to start with a basic document and then they're going to deal with us individually as opposed to you dealing with the basic document and going through it, every piece to make sure that it's all current.
Right.
Anyone else?
I would think that reviewing their proposal and then maybe tweaking it or making adjustments would be more efficient than trying to invent the will from the get-go.
I would agree in terms of efficiency. $5,700 seems like a lot of money. $4,500 for the administrative manual seems like a lot of money. But if it avoids one lawsuit, then it's not a lot of money.
I was thinking of trying to read that whole policy manual plus generate...
Right. Yeah, your bill might be higher than what we're paying them.
I think I'd probably have a heart attack, you know, myself. I think I'd get it done.
Plus, like I was thinking, if we get someone outside to do it, then that frees up administration and other people to focus on education and the sophomore and kids and their learning and education as opposed to looking at this policy and looking at this policy in the next month, two or three more, and just taking their time away from what they should be focusing on.
I have two requests though, if you have them do this or anybody does it. Number one is that when they do the policies, we've started to do this, but many of theirs don't list sub-paragraphs for separate lines. So if you want to refer to something, like I did tonight, I'm counting paragraphs and sentences to tell you where to go look for it. And I think they should make more use of that. And then the other one is, don't use the passive voice in the policy. It leads to too many confusion and arguments down the road. It's sort of like buck passing. That's it.
If the board decides that they want it done professionally, that would certainly be a way to do it. Okay, the next item I have for you is Blaze Wizneski. Blaze has qualified for All East Concert Band. Again, Blaze has qualified for All East Concert Band, so we're asking permission for Blaze and her music instructor, Mrs. Gore, to travel to Providence, Rhode Island. It's been a very, very long time since we've had a student qualify for All East. Maybe 10 to 15 years, so we're pretty proud of what Blaze has done. We would ask that you would approve for a trip. That's April 9 through 12.
Questions on that?
Blaze was our drum major this past year, so if you were in any football games, you saw her at work.
Seeing the questions or comments, authorized solicitor?
Right. Mr. Platonic has been working with Scottdale Housing. So David, I'll let you elaborate a little bit on that. Resolution to represent the district.
I don't know whether you want to discuss that in executive session, but for public, there was a hearing in the fall and the notes on this, excuse me. They had to come up with a new assessment because it's new construction. And there was a preliminary done by the field appraiser and the board had a assessment of $442,000. The owner appealed and they hired a professional appraiser. I went to the hearing and opposed it. Their appraiser would have, was $1.4 million. The board's level of value is $2,290,000. So the assessment would be 282,000, I'm sorry. What's wrong? It was worse than that. The owner's appraisal for fair market value was $603,000 versus $2,290,000. And that would be an assessment of $116,000 versus $442,000. It would be a $24,000 loss at current taxes. I requested the right to submit a short brief. I talked with our expert and submitted about a three-page brief and the owner's attorney responded with their one and a half pages of response and the board made a decision to maintain it at the $442,000 assessment. So on the day after our last hearing or two, I received notice that the owner appealed on the 29th or 30th day. So they've taken it to court. And their numbers would cause you to lose off of that appraisal of $24,000 per year. It's a very unusual problem. It's even different than the subsidized housing situations that we had before. And there was some tax-exempt financing which acted as the vehicle by which there is a theoretical subsidy rather than a direct subsidy. So it's as complicated, if not more complicated, than the Scottdale Plaza and Scottdale Limited cases that we had in the past. And the borough's attorney has entered an appearance but also sent me a letter saying that they want to be informed of what's going on, but they don't anticipate actively litigating the case because of their budget. So they have a new solicitor too.
Any questions? Hearing none. Appointment of deputy tax collectors?
Right. Act 164 of 2014 requires tax collectors now have to appoint a deputy tax collector that would act on their behalf in the event that they become incapacitated and are unable to perform the duties of tax collector. And then the municipality, the county, and the school district all need to approve their particular appointments. So Diane Fig has appointed Kathleen Zaffina as her alternate, her deputy tax collector. And Kathleen Zaffina has in turn appointed Diane Fig. And they're both tax collectors for our municipality, so it's a very nice arrangement in terms of the district because we're dealing with individuals who are used to working with us. So we would ask that you would approve those two appointments of deputy tax collectors at the next meeting. And that is at no cost to the district, it's just the formality.
Does Faith County need to do this also?
I would assume.
Okay, you said not the new judge for them.
Right.
Okay. Does Kathleen do ever so? No, she has Scottdale. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Cafeteria charging policy?
I'm going to call Mrs. Huggins to discuss two items for you. One would be the charging policy in the cafeteria. First of all, what she's proposing and secondly, why we need to do this. Seems like tonight is a night when we're catching up and getting our policies in line with current legislation. And then the other item that Mrs. Huggins wants to talk about is reduced price breakfasts. So go ahead, Lynn, thank you.
It's on the charge policy. We basically allowed charges in the cafeteria for a long time, but newer legislation now requires that we have written policies on certain things when they come up for review. And one of the things is if you allow meal charging, you have to have a board-approved charge policy. So basically, what I did was put into writing what the procedures we use for charging in the cafeteria for you to review and post. So I...
That policy, by the way, is in the package, it's papered up on your desk. We didn't make it into your packet this week, so I was handing it out this evening.
Just one thing I'll mention, I don't know if you've ever paid attention on the news, but many districts have a big issue with meal charging. I've seen districts talk about debts as high as, you know, upwards of $100,000. And last year, at the end of the year, our negative balances for four schools was probably a little over $300. So we really don't have a huge problem with negative balances. We try to stay on top of them. We send letters home to the parents and usually they're taken care of. Once in a while, we have a few bad violators, but overall, it's not a terrible situation here. But we did want to put this in writing so that when, we do have future reviews, that there's a policy to show PD when they come.
Questions on that from Mrs. Huggins? Reduced-price breakfast?
Yes. What I'm proposing is USDA put out a memo that to reduce barriers for lower-income students that allows the food service account to absorb changing the price of reduced-priced meals. And after taking a little look at the participation for reduced-price breakfast, I'm proposing that you approve us to eliminate the charge for reduced-price breakfast to possibly increase the participation in that category for breakfast here. We're talking each student in a reduced-price category would pay 30 cents for breakfast and we'd like to make that free for them. So that, any costs associated with that would be absorbed by the food service account. But in looking at this, I think if we were able to increase participation, the amount of reimbursement would more than cover that 30 cents. So I'm requesting that you approve that for us.
Questions?
What percent of our students participate in breakfast?
Over district-wide, I would say it's between 20 and 25 percent. It just, it depends. And the same with the reduced-price category. Certain categories, the participation is higher. The free percentage also... The free percentage also obviously would be higher. The reduced-priced category is somewhere in a 25, 30, 35 percent, depending again on menu items, but we would like to see that go up a little higher, too. So that's why we're hoping if we take that down, we would get that participation up a little more.
Any more questions?
Thanks, Lynn.
Citizens' comments?
Jan Kiefer?
I guess we could just ask the cafeteria lady if the, and the food is toxic to the kids or if there's allergens, and I could give you a list of 10 of those. I'm not clear what I'm allowed to talk about here tonight. But coming up, I'm just wondering what the goal is here to reduce the public comment period 25 percent, you know, taking one of them away. Obviously, people come here all for a opposing, often critical view of you, and I think it's a real statement of where our society is, and I just can't believe this board is going to put up with any of this. But I know who the majority are, and these comment periods have really never been lengthy in my mind, and often people tell me that's the only interesting part of the meeting when they get back to me. Okay, so you can go ahead and model them off these other school districts and, you know, play your relativism game, but it's in the information it's going to be difficult because we understand your intentions and I don't see them as good at this point. I've witnessed others that have come up here and clearly have their constitutional rights violated. I've clearly had my constitutional rights violated at this podium, and I have a history of being arrested at this podium, and I've seen favoritism in it because I've watched every detail and every recording, and I keep deep records of this issue. So you're going to open a can of worms, and I can promise you that I will fight you with all my resources, my legal recourse source, with my financial resources, with my social resources, and you have a history that you're going to have to protect at this point going forward. I come up here and speak about multi-topics, and there won't be one more exemption on this. Next time you violate me up here, you're going to be spending money. And I'm going to be spending money, but I don't mind doing that. And if you think I've been passionate so far, you haven't seen the passion yet. So when you tell me to come up here as a group and you say, "We're going to speak about cafeteria food," I'm not going to speak with any group because I haven't shared any of the views often with those groups. This was asinine when you three, with people who put this together, you know, it was just embarrassing. And if I was sitting on this board, I would be saying what I'm saying here. And when I come here next week, I don't know how, you know, I guess we'll be speaking, but, you know, it's just as atrocious. It's not because I'm passionate about this issue. When you watch yourself on recording here and you listen to the solicitor and where, I know this is going to go next week, where I'll come in legally next week, it's going to be a nightmare for you. So you can look at the Baldwin Whitehall School District story in the paper today of how they're trying to break sunshine in there and they have the press on their side for a change. I don't expect this particular reporter, but I know the trip, when they see what happened in Whitehall and they see what happened here. I feel like just letting you walk into the trap, to be honest, I would hesitate to even come up here. And I'm a good sport, I'm a citizen, I'm an alumni here. I want to take this the most diplomatic and easy way out of here. So you give me the blank stares and the smiles, and then, Mike, I lay this on your shoulders, you've been sitting at that podium or at that chair trying to organize these speakers that come up here, and I think that piss poor jaw of it. And tell me when my time's up, I might think of something else I can say up locally, too. I consider this an aggressive act on the citizens to try to come up here, and I know how hard it is. I've seen this happen in other municipalities. I haven't seen it in other school districts. I've seen it happen in Scottdale. They played this stuff on us about 10 years ago, and that got beat down pretty bad. So, you know, we'll let the press talk about the score of the high school basketball game, but we'll let democracy ride on the citizens to carry the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
This great nation once fought a war over taxation without representation, and this many hundreds of years later, apparently it's still in place. It's my understanding that when someone is elected to the school board, they are to represent everyone who is a constituent in this school district. I'm assuming that includes people you don't like, like me. This is my question. If I call a school board member and I have a problem, and that person refuses to talk to me, what are my options? I personally call to the board president and ask him to call me back. I had a problem that would be solved, and he has refused to talk to me. What are my options? Am I represented by you? Is this taxation without representation?
It's citizens' comments. It was discussed earlier with the.
Are we back in 1776 again? I'm a citizen. I have a right to know what are my options if the school board member that I call refuses to talk to me. What are my options?
Right.
I hear you loud and clear.
Board members have anything for public discussion? In a motion to adjourn for executive session for personnel and?
Tax assessment appeal for Scottdale.
Do you have a motion? Most of my Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second, my Mr. Beistel. All of those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?[1613.21]